States of America and its majority all live for which is Sam's one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody tonight and those in person and online first item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes. So motion and a second, thank you. Motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed same sign. Motion approved. Approval of the agenda. An item that we need to add with Sheriff Lang is payment for radios. He submitted an invoice here just shortly ago on radios that we approved to purchase probably some time ago.
Eight months.
Yeah, eight months ago. So he just has the invoice for those and would like that added. Any additional items for the agenda tonight?
I will move to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Motion in the second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed same sign. Motion approved. First item on the agenda, Lisa Duce, Superintendent of Schools.
I did give you each a letter and our school is dissolving. So we will be working on transferring land and stuff. What we need is, we have a committee and I need you to accept the committee that we did. It's going to be Jeff Reth, Scott Provotsky, Steve Swandeck, Beth Buckmeyer, and Kami Christofferson. And that will be, if it's okay, that will be our Ramsey County Committee.
Motion to approve the annexation reorganization of the annexation board.
I will move. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the annexation board as requested. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed same sign. Motion approved.
So just to give you a little update, we did receive the letter from the Edmar School from Frank Schell, he's a superintendent there. That was our first thing. Right now, the Edmar School also is working on like a plan, their board is working on a plan. And that has to be submitted to the Ramsey County Committee. So that might take, I'm hoping they hurry with it, but it's a waiting game, so Amanda will probably have to wait a month. I'm gonna give her a month. Then there, after that, there's a questionnaire that goes out to all the kids that are in the school, their parents to sign a questionnaire of where they want their child to go. We're looking at someone to go to Park River, someone to Lakota. I know there's probably one or two coming to Devil's Lake, there's one to Munich, and so many to Langdon School, which is Cataler. So we have to include all those committee members of the different counties. So we'll have to wait for that. The total parcels that we're looking at, Steve was able, Steve Mo was able to help me capture all that, and we're looking at 2,758 parcels of land that Edmar School has.
Twenty parcels, 268?
2,758.
That's just the Ramsey County?
No, that's, Welsh County has 531, Cataler has 268, and Ramsey has 1,959. So after we have the Edmar Plan and we get the questionnaires back and we're gonna be looking at drawing a line. We also, I also have to go and go to job service for the dissolving of the school. So that's one more thing that we have to do. So any questions? I mean, I'll keep you up to date of what's going on.
So each of the other counties have a committee like this, then?
Yes. And we, and when we have our county committee meeting, I will include them, so they'll come here because you have to be included to make the vote so that the state accepts this.
I asked earlier, but I should ask again, is there, are they allowed a certain time to get this all done? Not from you, but from the state?
Yeah, the state wants it done by July 1, but they do give us until August 15. Well, that doesn't give us enough time because estimates have to be out too in August. So, you know, I wanna get this rolling, so we get ahead of the game. So we are done by July 1, so we have that month to update the districts.
So what kind of timeframe would you wanna see it to be done?
At least by March, April, I mean, no longer than that. I'm not pushing it, I don't know how that's gonna go.
That would be for the committee?
What's that?
I think we need to set a timeframe for the committee so that we meet the suspense so that you don't get, we don't get ourselves in trouble so that we can meet that July suspense.
Right, but I have to wait for all this other stuff to come in, so I can update you like maybe November and December of what's going on and how much I've received. Cause I really have to wait for the Edmar School to give me their plan because there's, there's a plan now that if there's any excess money, that can be awarded to the city. So, I mean, they have to come up with a plan.
So many dollars they have available can go to the city?
Yeah, there's, I haven't looked at that century code, but Frank, Frank Schell has.
So assets have to be like the building, everything has to get sold.
Yeah. And I don't know what they all have, you know, as far as, I haven't been to Edmar School in how many years, so.
Yeah, it's a sad day.
Yeah, it is.
Well, you lose a school, you lose a dollar.
Yeah. Yeah. But they only have 17 children right now, so it's, I kinda knew it was coming.
Any other questions for Lisa?
And I will keep you updated as long as I, you know, get my information and...
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Mr. Pluton, Devil's Lake Public School Superintendent, Matt.
Eric, thanks for having me back.
Thanks for coming in.
Tried to give you guys a little bit more of a one pager and you're kinda summarized in what we're looking at doing. So we are looking at adding on to our current LA CTC building and it is the, we're looking at building onto the northeast side to try to bridge the gap between the high school and the tech center. And basically, we would have a shop and two classrooms, an office, and a couple toilets in that building. And then we would have a hallway where our high school kids could enter on the east side of LA CTC rather than on the south side, so we would have a little bit of an advantage there. If you take a look down at the bottom of what the building comes progress, you know, that's probably the most important part of what we're looking at is the ability to offer agricultural education. And these are some of the classes that were proposed to be added, introduction to agriculture, foundations of agriculture, agronomy science, egg sales and service, egg business and management, botany and horticulture, egg processing, and then the last two I think are very interesting to make sure that we note are the supervised agricultural experience program and then our cooperative work experience where we would have juniors and seniors head out into the community and work at different areas and earn credit. SAEP program, if you're not familiar with that, is a summer program that is very advantageous for students to be able to do any project really to agriculture health. And then that can provide quite a bit of kickback from the state to our program as well as providing some credits and opportunities to advance for our students both at the state level and at the national level for their SAEP programs. In addition to the classes, we would be looking at adding an education center, something that's near and dear to my heart. I was a city kid, I got active in FFA and I think it really started my leadership process. Great opportunities through FFA that we're not providing right now for our egg kids. I think that's very important to recognize. If you flip it over on the top of the second page there, we've discussed opportunities with, with the college to share materials, knowledge, equipment, you know, any way that we can help to pool resources for teaching and learning experiences for all, for all our participants, I think that we can create great partnership just like we do in other areas. And then financial information, just a reminder that we've got 1.2 million dollars from the state, it is a matching grant, so I'm working on the other 1.2 million dollars locally and that's why I'm here tonight. I met with our equipment dealerships today. I have a meeting with, with a bean dealer coming up in the future, with CHS coming up in the future. I've had quite a few meetings already and we're working hard towards our goal of raising this money. But I know that there were some questions last time about details as far as the description of what we would be looking at doing with that 2.4 million. So that's why I asked our architects to be able to provide this information. You can see how it's broken down there through the construction totals and quite a bit of the budget right now, 631,000 is in contingencies, but that's part of built course. So if you look right underneath that table, businesses who have been asked to financially support the project, Devil's Lake Youth Activities, Ramsey County Board of Missioners, which is where I'm at right now, Highway, High Plains Equipment, Ironhide Equipment, Butler Machinery, Leading Edge Equipment. I do have an appointment with CHS and Inkstrom Bean and Seed, and I'm planning on continuing to try to reach or get in contact with Summers Manufacturing, North Harvest Bean Growers Association, Egg Country, as well as some other local businesses in order to financially support. And then the last thing, I'll just talk about the impact on the community. The number of individuals and families that would be served through the program, you know, are quite lengthy. When you think about a potential of 30 years plus with this program, how many people we could impact with it, I think it's, goes without saying how important this is for our number one industry. Agriculture Education Program will provide opportunities for students to learn basic egg skills, knowledge, occupation training, leadership skills, and technology skills. I think that it's important to recognize that while this will be a great addition for our farm kids and our ranch kids, there are so many other kids at that high school that we're gonna tap into and open their eyes to the egg industry. It's not just about raising crops or raising cattle, but it's working in agronomy, it's working in, you know, crop insurance, it's working in different areas of that egg sector. And I think that sometimes without an egg program, our kids don't necessarily recognize that. So with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions from commissioners. Well, I do agree that it's something that's vitally needed, has been for, you know, 30 years since the last Boig left the district. I happen to be a benefactor of the Boig education that I received at Devil's Lake. Like you, I, the leadership skills that you developed in Boig and FFA serve you your entire adult life.
I agree.
And so...
Do you have any committed funds at all?
No, not at this point, I do not.
Besides the 1.2 million?
Correct. Yep, 1.2 million.
Does the, yeah, does the school district itself have available funds to commit to a project like this?
I think that they would, you know, if we got close to our goal, I think that they would step in and help us to bridge the gap. I think that, you know, my school board has been open to the idea of committed funds spanning over the course of two years, so they would cover that immediate impact. But I think right now that they feel like they need to focus on some of the other building projects and try to do this primarily through other local funds and donations is the word that I've gotten. But I don't, I don't know that that door's closed, Commissioner Pitt, I think that, you know, if we came to them and worked some funds and we needed them to help bridge, I think that, you know, they would be definitely open to it.
Have you approached the city at all?
I have not.
You've not done it?
I guess I hadn't thought about that, but yeah, yeah, that would be something that I'd be willing to do.
I mean, it's part for them to, to help grow the community.
Right.
You know? My feelings. I do have a question.
Yes.
And I know you weren't here.
Yeah.
So I, I understand the gap. When they say it was in the spring of 2021, this money was sitting here? I know this is probably a difficult question for you to answer, but what have they been doing to raise the money? Why haven't they done this? Like, you know what I mean? And I know you're, weren't the individuals there?
Yeah.
But that's like a three-year gap.
Yeah. So my understanding is that this was definitely on the table last school year. And Mr. Baki's health issues and the transplant that he went through is, is the reason that this got pushed it back for, you know, I don't think that having a referendum on the table at the same time helped this project in. But again, I'm, like you said, I'm extrapolating. I have not had a conversation as to exactly why this hasn't gotten done. All I've tried to do is put my foot on the gas pedal and do what I can.
The only reason I'm asking that is because Jeff had asked if the school was willing to put some money up for this, right? And they're saying over the next couple of years, and if this was, I'm kinda gonna crack around the school, Martin Willinger.
Sure, sure.
If this was 2021, 22, 23, 24, they should have put the money away so that they can go to the, I personally think going out to these people to ask for money would be a hell of a lot easier if they would've came off and said, "School's gonna put up this much money, this is our goal, this is where we need to go." I know we need 1.2 million.
Yeah.
But there's just not that picture that I can picture in my mind of what they're willing to give. You know, they need to have some stamina to go on all of that. They're supposed to be there for the education of our kids.
Yeah.
You know, I think the only frustration on my part...
No, I totally understand. The only thing that I would say and we've had conversations about as a school is, you know, onloading the, the cost of the educator, you know, the, the technology, the stuff that's gonna go into it for an onboard program. You know, that's something that the school board has to get into, you know? So if you look at that, we're probably looking at for a CTE or to be one, one egg instructor with salary and benefits, we're probably looking at maybe about $81,000. So that is something that they have committed to hiring and, and putting into the launch. But I understand where you're coming from.
It wasn't. Wasn't that money from the state tied into that?
It wa, it was onboard.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that was probably...
I think last, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was the spring ago, they said the money was gonna get funded and it got put onboard. There's no money and stuff, but I think I have a feeling they kinda knew it was coming, they just didn't know the money. You know? I mean, I definitely think that, my feelings is something has to be done if I would, if it was over 1.2 million dollars to benefit the community. I don't know. I don't know what kind of funds we have there, but... Wasn't there a request on answering the original ARPA? Did you guys put that?
There was and we, we didn't commit anything to the school because at that time, Mrs. Burdina stated that they didn't know whether the funding was gonna come through, and so we didn't wanna commit anything at that particular time because it was a great unknown. The federal government was kinda sitting on it and, and I think they ended up sitting on it and then I think the state stepped in and said, "Well, we're, we're gonna fund these because we have vocational schools that are, already started their projects based on the assumption that this federal money was coming and it's not." So I think the legislature actually put some money into that CTE ones, if that isn't...
I don't know the dollar amounts, but I know that partially funded through feds and partially funded through, so yes.
I think there's some pressure to knowing that we're hurting on the...
On the two-year degree.
The trade type of educational, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't commit any of our ARPA dollars to the school, we're setting these aside for that particular reason. And, yeah. So I'm not sure where we could find money, if we could, you know, cause it's obviously not something we budgeted for and it wasn't in this year's budget and certainly wasn't in next year's. Unless anybody has any creative ideas on where we could pull some money, I'm not, unfortunately, I'm not sure if there is gonna be the ability to contribute at this particular time other than our full support from the commission.
I mean, the only other thing we could do, Jeff, is like we did, like you guys did prior to me being on the board, that they did for...
Search and rescue.
Search and rescue. If we were to borrow and pay it back, but like you said, it wasn't in the budget, you know, and I don't know how we would go about doing that. You know, if, if you were tomorrow and you're going money type thing and paying it back over a five-year period, depending on what you, cause I think that's what they did for that. I wasn't here other than you and Ed on that deal. But I think that's what they did there, wasn't that like a five-year angle that they did? I mean, it's a possibility, I guess.
Well...
Probably even have to try to hash out the books.
So surgeon, surgeon rescue wasn't a, you know, the school already has their taxing authority, has a separate taxing board, a political subdivision, so where search and rescue falls under the sheriff's department and has no taxing abilities other than what, I mean, you know, if the sheriff would include them in, in his budgeting. And so that's kinda how that building got done and it got built and it got funded and I think a lot of it was through some fundraising and whatever the, and the county would get in, it was a loan, I think that we included in that five-year deal. Was it a...
I think the loan was 400,000.
Oh.
And then if the project exceeded that amount, that was their responsibility to try to figure out how to pay that. It was one payment, one payment a year for like five years.
And that was in front of the mail, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Jeff, can you just say the headline is for the particular?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's, that's what he wanted me to have, that is director sick at CTE. I've had several conversations with him since and, you know, he's pleased with progress that I've made as far as getting people to the temple to at least have a discussion. So I don't feel like it's imminent that he's gonna pull the funds immediately, I think he wants to wait and see what kind of progress we can make. So I don't feel like the run's gonna get pulled out from under me on the level first or anything like that, but yes, we're under a tight timeline, so.
Is that something you could maybe ask him for a potential extension and we could all sit down together? Maybe a commissioner or a school board member, yourself, maybe some other members of the egg community and work together to come up with some funding ideas?
Sure.
I mean, I'd be willing to help you out if you'd like, or we have other members on our county commission that, you know, are either directly in the egg industry or have good ideas themselves, so. And, cause looking at your list, I could expand it by 10, 15 off the top of my head and that's, I mean, you know, started thinking if you could help expand that by a few more too. So there's, there's a lot of egg-related industries within our community and within our county that would benefit from having kids with that type of an education, whether they be city kids or, or farm kids. I think there's a great opportunity for our city kids to get a better understanding of the economics that drive the state of North Dakota. Yeah, it's not all oil industry, it's, a lot of after the last drop of oil that is pumped, we'll still be harvesting wheat in North Dakota.
When, when you met with some of these, what was there?
You know, it was an initial meeting today, so I presented just like I presented to you guys. They bumped off some additional names, just like Commissioner Pitt was mentioning for me to jot down that, I already made this paper up. And, you know, the overall consensus is just like you guys, we wanna see this happen. But as of right now, I told them that I would follow up as far as whether or not they could commit dollars individually, cause I had three implement dealers in the room. So I don't know exactly what they're...
But there was a lot of interest.
Oh, yeah. I haven't met anybody yet that tells me you're off your offer, we need an egg program. Anybody that I speak to has the same opinion as you guys, that we need an egg program.
Yeah.
But so, yeah, there was some support and I think it really opened their eyes to see that we're not just teaching farming and ranching, we're teaching egg sales, we're teaching, you know, those side industries that's so important. And they talked about losing so many of their technicians, you know, to specific farmers or, you know, and how, how much the need we have for more employees in this industry. So, and local employees.
I think it'd be great, so.
Okay.
Wishes of the commission? Any recommendations or any other input? I, I think, you know, unfortunately, we don't have a checkbook to write for you today and wish we could.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'd like to see more commitment from the school. I'm 100% for this. I think that for us sitting here now, we're present for it, but I'd like to see some more commitment from the school board saying, "One way or another, this is gonna happen. If we go out and raise 500,000 dollars, we're gonna make sure this happens."
Yeah.
Cause I hate for you to go out on the ground and come up with 800,000 and then they tell you, "Sorry."
Yeah.
Now you gotta go back to all the people and say, "You know, we're this close." I think it would be easier to get money from individuals if you got commitment. The school board's gonna make this happen no matter what.
Okay.
I, that's just my feelings, you know? Because if the school board isn't committed to do this, why should it be committed? You know? And the law and all is gonna help that place up there. And I know that it was a shortcut coming on getting into school, but I think if this is something that's done, I think in the future, maybe moving forward in school is gonna be a lot easier to sell off.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the advice, I appreciate your time and if I wanna get a committee together, I'll give you a call.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you very much.
I just got off the track a little before I came here. Let me know about that.
All right, thank you guys.
We missed our hearing.
Nobody's here. Oops.
So do we need to adjourn the commission meeting for the hearing of the annexation or the foreclosure? Okay. So we'll adjourn the regular county committee... So we'll, uh, adjourn the regular county commission meeting, and we will resume as the hearing for the twenty twenty-three appraised values. We'll call that meeting to order, or that hearing to order. So within our packets, we had a spreadsheet of properties with appraised values on them. If, uh. There's no objections and none in the crowd, we would go ahead and approve a motion to accept the values set moving forward.
And then that's moved forward as far as.
So you go onto the foreclosure list.
That's it.
And the val, the figures here, uh, that, that's what is owing currently owing.
Right.
Against the property. So.
And then this is, they still have time to come in and pay this note?
Yeah. Yeah.
So the budget will be.
They have, oh, wow.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Oh, there's, I was asking.
Um, how many did I, oh, did I say that we had to? Four.
That's right.
Two, three. There will be four notices of intent to evict. Not sure on, um. I know the one in Starkweather for sure, no one lives there, but we still have two. Because that's, that one is tricky because the mobile home is taxed separately from the land. So the land is what's being foreclosed on, because it's behind three years, but the mobile home is not. So. Um, she, she has been in contact with me about that, and I, you know, I did tell her that her timeline was five o'clock on, you know, November twenty-first, so.
Yeah, and so say somebody pays up on the mobile home, but not the property, then they get to keep the mobile home, but they have to move it off the property. And then vice versa, they pay up on the land, but not the mobile home. So that's a different set of rules that applies to that. We've got a lot. Is it mobile homes are one year or is it?
Um.
Two years.
Well, um, one.
So.
Yeah.
It's just kind of a moving target.
Um, yeah. And the, the only one that I, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say I'm a hundred percent sure. We'll just, you know, have the sheriff over there be the.
Um, one question, the ones that don't have a name on them or just say Ramsey County?
Yep.
What does that mean?
Those have been on the foreclosure list.
Oh, okay, but they never sell. Okay.
Forever.
Yeah.
They have to be.
Are you just wanting to clear?
Yep.
Yeah, so I figured, but.
They have to be included. Um, the one in Devil's Lake that is like twenty-two thousand dollars, that is the, um, green grass that is on the other side of a time fitness. Um, they're used to.
Used to be a small house there.
House, yep, yep. And then they, um, can, you know, was there a fire?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something, yep.
And then they click on that.
A fire, then they condemned the house, then the city tore it down. And that's why it's twenty-two thousand dollars, because there's.
Thousand dollars.
Four, fourteen thousand dollars worth of specials.
Yeah.
Great.
So. And anyone, anyone, and when anyone inquires about that property, I always tell them to go to the city commission and ask because, you know, they, they may forgive.
Specials.
Half of it or all of it or, you know. But any, any of those specials would have to be, they would have to go to the city board to have them forgiven. So.
So would there be a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three appraised values listed? Sorry, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, one roll call for this, or?
Um, no, motion's good.
Motion's good?
Yep.
All in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Motion carries. With that, uh, motion to adjourn the hearing for the appraised values.
So. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting of the appraised values. Uh, meeting is closed or the hearing's closed. We'll reconvene as around the county commission and continue with our regular scheduled programming. Mr. Fieldson?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Uh, first off, our only last project is the thing called Box Over. People can install and pause, call, shout out, and get an update on that.
Sure, they got the last of the box over section set, um, yesterday. And then I think I got the last hearing on today, um, for the backfilling. Next couple of days, um, we got the consult CEF bill goes in between tomorrow at eleven, I think, and then they'll be pouring the caps on the day after that. Um, they're saving between the two box sections. And then, um, they're talking about putting blue tops in on the subgrade on Thursday and gravel blue house positive Friday already. So then possibly would be paving as early as next week. I don't know the weather in there, so about tractor. Straters wouldn't pay for that. So. I don't know if they'll get open before the completion date or not, but we gotta get that date nailed down so we can have DOT come and give a pre-opening inspection. But I guess they may just move it there, keep it silent.
Scheduled to, uh, November first, October thirty-first, is that the deadline?
Uh, October twenty-eighth is the completion date, though I have the creative avenues after that. Um, their previously scheduled date was November second with their initial schedule. But so you have a few days. Well, at least, but if they get paved and striped and open, but maybe, it might get done by completion date now. I don't know if things go well.
Okay.
All right. My first, uh, item there is the exact same sentence as on my last again, so that's not entirely correct. It's down, hasn't gotten all of our chips delivered, so we're paying, we're paying for the portion that we hadn't paid for before. That amount is different than what is printed there. It's fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, ninety-four cents. And I'll pay for the entire amount of chips that we, that they hold us. So I'm looking for a motion to pay that balance.
So it was fifteen thousand.
Nine forty-six and ninety-four cents. Ninety-four.
Okay.
Total is roughly around just under forty thousand. I think I had fifty thousand debt budgeted, so.
Motion to pay?
Yep, still will.
Second, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay the down construction invoice. Roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Yesner?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Will Homie?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Okay, now, program, project program sheet that I've been talking about, we finally got a copy of that. Um, it does have our paving project down there that we have coming up, and also the four flood projects that we had from twenty twenty-two. Uh, we selected engineer for those, and those are in the, in the pipeline. But, uh, our paving project, the opening day got moved to November of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. So if you know, if we use federal aid, we'll be doing the construction in twenty twenty-five. Wasn't happy to see that, but that's the way that got pushed back. Now, maybe guys can help me explain this, so the only way we can really get that moved up is if we don't use all federal aid dollars and use our own dollars and finish it.
Right, usually you can borrow up to four years ahead, sometimes a little more with your federal aid program, but they're not really. The companies that have a balance are looking to spend theirs. They have projects coming up, especially with the, uh, the prices of the community in the last couple of years. So that you can't borrow ahead that far currently, so that's why they want to wait till another fiscal year passed, I guess, so they have twenty twenty-five songs available. The way to push it to that mid-date.
So we budgeted for a paving project for next year, and it's not going to happen?
Well, I'm going to crunch the numbers and then see what we're setting, because we got like a million and a half of.
Prairie dog.
Yeah, prairie dog money. So I'm going to crunch some numbers and see what we're actually setting there, and then that's the next meeting. We'll decide. I mean, it changes how we have to pay for engineering and that type of thing too, so there's a little more money we put out for, for that, so.
So basically, what will we lose if we do early? I mean, that's not early, but what, you, you have all the figures on what we'll lose from our feds?
Uh, well, you know, here's how it'll work. Our, our twenty twenty-six project will just have that much more federal aid dollars to work with because we won't be borrowing ahead for twenty, twenty-four.
Still needing the funding, it's just.
It'll be a matter of federal dollar versus local dollars is what's going to happen. For sure.
Yeah, those, those annual funds are yours. They, they, they save in your, your name all the time. They don't, they don't go away. So you're borrowing ahead quite a bit already.
Right, we're borrowing ahead so far that that's why they pushed it, because everybody else wants to get their projects done, and they're not borrowing ahead, so we're borrowing ahead, so they, they coming for us, basically. Does that make sense?
We've already borrowed money.
Yeah.
Previous year.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you're at four hundred thousand in the hole after this year.
Basically, we're playing catch. Basically, yeah. And this, this happens every once in a while, and we end up using our own dollars to do, to fund more than half a percentage, as it is. So, you know, every eight years or, I don't know, eight years, maybe something like that, we end up using our own dollars. And now this year, we got some. I forgot that Gophers deal already, prairie dog money used, so, you know, we got that money to play with too. Or use. And that's like a million and a half, so.
Well, you want to crunch some numbers for us and?
Right, because, because there's engineering involved, but.
No. Because the more we delay that project, the more expensive it's going to get.
More expensive and further behind our project, our list gets.
Yeah. Keep extending that five-year road plan.
Right, definitely.
Yeah, I guess just because already you had other plans for the.
Prairie dog money.
Exactly.
Right?
That are, you know, the federal aid, a certain equipment, so what it can be spent on, prairie dogs are a little more flexible, so.
Ted, we didn't, Ted, I mean, you.
Anyway.
The prairie dog money you did really out of anything.
No, I didn't.
Because you.
You were.
Yeah.
I didn't.
We didn't know how much we were going to get.
So we had an idea, but we kept waiting for it and waiting for it, and now we finally got it. We didn't know basically what to borrow again.
Yeah, exactly, right. Because then we'd be in this situation of two.
Yeah, right.
And now we have to have it, so. And it's not that we're going to lose the money, it's just not going to be there because of the money.
Right, right. The federal dollar is correct.
Yep.
So that's where that's at. And as far as our flood, flood projects for twenty twenty-two, that's our budget for our local shares, so that's all there, and the federal dollars are all there, so. Money-wise, we're good to go on those four flood projects. They say they were going to send out a new one piece to sign after that.
Yeah, I thought.
Think they were going to change some stuff.
Yeah.
Because we asked, especially on the sign while we were there, and they said, no, we'll send you the.
Right.
Yeah, they, they don't get any of the numbers we've changed, but.
No.
Do we have any, do we have any of yours?
Right. So there's no real need to sign this one either.
Right.
Okay, any other questions at all time?
That's what they were waiting on to tell you. That's why we didn't have that to sign.
Probably, I mean, and I got after it, I might as well. We got to have these things for budget times, because we, we rely on these for our budgets, I mean.
Because, yeah, we had it the last couple of years, but, yeah.
And I know some other counties got out from two for not having that downtime.
Right, so always the kid was on.
And, and we're short help, I get it, I mean, but we're getting stepped up, we get nothing.
Railroad crossing?
Yeah, we did. I did get all three of those crossings put into the program. Either late this fall or early next spring, they'll come out and visit them all, and then very shortly after that, they'll send us letters whether they got approved or not. So that's where that sits. They all got some in.
Thank you.
Um, the water board has done a couple of hydraulic studies. And one of them is on the, uh, Schley River Water Crossing. And they have made a motion to approve three eighty-four inch corrugated metal pipes at that site. Um, there's a lot of stipulation, like elevations and interelevations and stuff like that, which is in and on that. Which we've never had before, I don't understand. There's, I guess there's a date there that has to be a certain elevation too, so maybe that's why all the elevation. Anyway, I'm looking for a motion to accept the water board's recommendation to put three eighty-four inch metal pipe at that location. They're going to cost thirty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Need to order them, I guess, and accept their recommendation.
Maybe this is going to fix that water problem at that crossing?
Here's crossing, no, this will be the third time I've worked on that one, so. We've never raised it this before. Uh, no, no, because originally it was a bridge, and then they put this really low water crossing in. It didn't work because the equipment would belly out and almost flow away at times. So then they put some more in there, and that wasn't sufficient either, so now we're just going to quickly do a low water crossing. And it'll be a, a road to the same elevation as rest of the land around it. Was a little dip for, uh, so the overalls don't wash out, there'll be a dip away from the overalls, so the water goes over there.
When you say they, who puts it in?
Probably us, I mean, like my, our staff, my staff. We, we did the three next, so we're down, so all we got to have is a.
So we're not going to backwater up and blow something else out by doing this, are we?
Theoretically, no, because the next three upstream are, what, a quarter mile, less than a quarter mile away.
Oh, okay.
And they're the exact same size.
Okay.
Those are the ones we just put in this summer.
Right. I hate to do this, and then you blow the next one out.
Right. You enter very little additional water, very. You enter very little additional water, very little additional water coming. There's no other cooling speeding in between the two, so.
And this will fix it basically for them to get their equipment across.
Right, yeah, yeah. Bring trucks and everything, yeah.
Move to approve a recommendation of water board and to order the culverts. Motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation from the Ramsey County Water Board for the Slaydon Crossing in Francher Township between section twenty-three and twenty-six. Um, and order the culverts needed. Further discussion?
I do have a question for Kevin. Because this is a new item, is that in, come on, you're letting some place set?
That's a very good question. According to the center code, it should be sixty percent water board.
Should be sixty-four, it should be.
Sixty-four, yeah, so all this stuff's out of town, but it's a good point.
So can we, can we finalize the motion if we don't do it?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just, it's still a company paying for it, it's just Canada what, pot money.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
And the second one that they got the hydraulic study for is the one for Ryan Lorenz on Ramsey County eight. The hydraulic study called for a round forty-eight inch. And in the study, it does say that a arch culvert will work too. For whatever reason, Ryan wanted the arch culvert in there, so he is going to pay for the additional cost. So the water board's recommendation was for a forty-eight inch arch culvert with the, Ryan Lorenz paying the additional cost for the arch versus round. And the cost of that arch culvert is four thousand eight seventy-two and twelve cents.
Any idea what the difference is between an arch and a round?
It's probably twelve, fifteen hundred, somewhere in there.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll use the arch culvert, longest Lorenz pays this portion. And order, obviously we need to order, right?
Yes.
Basically, it's motion to accept the water board's recommendation. Do you have that, okay.
I'll do a second, Kevin.
Motion in a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation from the Ramsey County Water Board. And approving the forty-eight inch arch culvert in Trium Township between sections twenty-eight and thirty-three on Ramsey twenty-eight. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
All right, we're on. Galvin Construction did finish gravel in Ramsey County Two West over by the Penn area. And their last invoice is for fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars even. So entertain a motion to pay that.
So, second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and pay Galvin Construction for the gravel project in Ramsey Two West. Further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Kessler?
Aye.
Will family?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, we need to put a house in gravel into our Devil's Lake shop for just for our maintenance file. Um, I got quotes from Galvin Construction and Coast Construction. Galvin was twenty-three sixty yard and Coast was thirteen yard. The big discrepancy there, of course, is break, how far they have to haul it. So I'd like a motion to accept that, will quote from Coast Construction. So.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a second to approve the low bid for gravel into the maintenance area for Highway Department. Thirteen dollars a yard for Coast Construction. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
So who will be getting a thousand yards, so it'll be like thirteen dollars.
And last item, you have the Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement.
Right. I, I asked the board to take a look at that. I don't know, is everybody up to speed on what Sourcewell is and what goes on there?
You'd be better to give them a quick overview of what it is.
Okay, Sourcewell is a company that pays, bids on all kinds of products, all the same staples, refrigerators, water graders, or whatever. And in the past, the state legislature has not allowed North Dakota to use Sourcewell because they didn't feel that they were competitive with North Dakota vendors. So now the legislation has gotten together and passed, I mean, a law that we can use Sourcewell. So what this is, is agreement, well, part of the legislation says that we have to have an agreement signed by the commission. memorandum of agreement. So this is the standard agreement that Sourcewell uses and I just ordered it to vote for me.
So I did look through it like Kevin had asked me. Sourcewell is a company that's based out of Minnesota. And so the agreement is written with all of the Minnesota code provisions. I don't know that that really matters a whole lot because the legislature specifically passed a law about cooperative purchasing for counties and municipalities during this last session in January, April. If you really want to look at the laws, if you take NDCC eleven, eleven sixty-nine into Google, it'll pop up. I'll give that to you again, NDCC eleven, eleven sixty-nine. I can read it for you here, it's just two sentences. With the approval of the Board of County Commissioners, the county may participate in cooperative purchasing agreements with the state or another political subdivision of this state or any other state by executing a joint powers agreement under chapter fifty-four, forty point three. So in effect, that's what we're doing with Sourcewell and their document that they're providing to us.
So theoretically, we could do a joint powers with other counties to enhance our purchasing abilities.
If you're buying power, in theory, you could, yeah.
For counties, other states.
Okay. We should probably have a motion to go ahead and sign this thing.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Okay.
So move, decide.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to enter into the Sourcewell agreement. Further discussion?
This is just another option that you can still.
Yeah, we can still bid, like we always, there's a board now.
In fact, I think that would probably be a good idea to do.
Yeah, I, I.
Further discussion? If you're hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
And I have one other thing, the surplus items that we have. We got to declare those surplus items, so I don't know if you guys saw the list or.
I did not.
So what we have is just a old case tractor. We got a nineteen ninety-four Asks Light machine that we use for patching tiny potholes which, watch our wood, we don't have tiny potholes anymore. Uh, and there's a self-propelled room. A nineteen seventy-eight International ten eighty-six tractor. Since we're getting a new solar tractor. Uh, a trailer for the, our roller, blacktop roller. And pull behind packer that we don't use anymore, it's a kind of a maintenance piece. And then one tandem truck, nineteen ninety tandem truck. I can only.
Is that a gas?
That is a diesel.
Diesel, runs?
Runs, yeah. We've got a twin to it, we're keeping the twin for all rocks and that kind of structure. Either just.
Did you put a production in or?
Yep.
Motion to approve the items for surplus sale from the Highway Department? Sorry, we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the uh, equipment listed from the Highway Department as surplus. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
Oh, wow, thank you.
Sheriff Lang?
Yes. Uh, what I'd like to talk to you first about is some of the service fees we got from the civil service. Uh, right now, we charge like fifty-two cents a mile when we go out to serve paper. With the price of gas and everything going up, I did some research when we attended the civil service school. Some have raised their rates up to a dollar a mile. Uh, just to kind of help offset some of the costs being incurred. Uh, as of right now, we don't charge an administrative fee. Uh, but a lot of agencies are going to an administrative fee. Kind of help cover the time that it takes to prepare these papers to go out to be served. And we charge like twenty cents a copy. And other agencies have raised it up to two dollars a copy. Because some of these places are sending us papers to be served in their, in their forty-page documents. So we're burning our printers up and, because we got to make at least two copies worth of hope. But once you start charging them, then they seem to send you them instead of, then we only have to charge the administrative fee for our paperwork on the end. So that, how I kind of brought it broke down is, is rural service, so if we have to go up there and more, we're charging mileage there and back every time we go up to attempt it. Uh, there'd be an administrative fee to, uh, get a process to go out. And then if there's copies, if there's only a couple of pages, we're not charging. Uh, and then whatever type of paper we're serving, North Dakota century code sets the fee for that, most of the papers we serve is like a thirty-dollar fee. Until we get into levies and executions and then it goes up. So what I would recommend on that end of it, that we up our mileage from fifty-two cents to a dollar. We start doing the administrative fee and we raise our, uh, copy rate up to two dollars. The other thing that I would recommend is like for in the city of Devil's Lake. We just set a flat fee of fifteen dollars for paper service. Uh, and this is basically for your mileage and it's unlimited how many times we go to serve. Like in rural, it's, uh, I think by statue, we only have to go three times, we'll be making an appointment. At about five times, we're just not able to serve and send it back. So in town, as we're going out, we just stop. So it's a fifteen-dollar flat fee, we'll do the five-dollar administrative fee. Uh, like I said, most of the paper service in town is, by stature, by century code is only a thirty-dollar paper service. So to serve papers in Devil's Lake could be fifty dollars. Typically, what we've been charging right now is thirty-seven, yeah, thirty, thirty-seven fifty. So they could bring it up a whole lot, but it's just some money that come back to us to offset, uh, the way I look at it. A lot of these papers are coming from collection agencies from outside of the area that are making money on this. And taxpayers are paying for us to serve these papers for them. Working on the low end of compensation to a lot of other places that I've checked with.
Just out of curiosity, how many, you have any idea how many you do in a given month?
Not in a given month, but I can tell you where we're at right now. We're approaching five thousand five hundred and some papers served so far this year, we're two months ago. I talked to Grant Forks, on a typical year, Grant Forks Sheriff's Department threw seven thousand a year. So we're right on pace with them. Right.
Not even a quarter.
So when you start looking at devil numbers and the amount of trips and stuff, it adds up for the time. Is anyone charging more than what you're recommending? No, this is different. Because when we add the civil service training, all the new sheriffs and the sheriffs come, so everybody just kind of talks about great and, and these are, yeah, the mileage at a dollar and the copies at two dollars and like current talent and fifteen-dollar flat rates.
So the individual.
That's the high.
The individual gets served pays this or the company that sends the papers?
The company that's sending us the papers, we serve them for them. This is the bill that goes back to them and they reverse account.
Make a motion to, uh, go with recommendations for a flag. Hold a second, Kevin.
Motion in a second to go ahead with the recommended changes from Sheriff Lang for the civil, uh, service paper fees. And Candy will have all those numbers listed in the minutes.
I do have one question. Do you want it to start on a specific date, so that you have time to notify them or?
I'd say we'll, we'll start in January and that's when the civil service cows start to, so.
Good. So like January one of?
Yes.
Anything else with that? We're good?
I think so, I think it's a good idea.
Yep, I hundred percent agree. With that, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, radio invoices, Sheriff Lang gave us some invoices.
Yeah, about eight months ago, you approved the purchase, uh, two portable radios, two mobile radios, uh, for the new cars. We've been waiting, they finally came in, we finally got the invoices.
Need two second motions, is it Jeff? Just one?
I think one would be fine, one, and the amounts are, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to pay both of these forty-two sixty and twenty-one eight eight eight.
Hold a second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and pay the invoices for Motorola Solutions. And one amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and zero cents. And the other invoice of forty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and zero, zero cents. And the other invoice of forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and zero, zero cents. Further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Well, Lommy?
Aye.
Portis?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Sheriff?
Just a couple things, uh, to let you know, I applied for grant through DOJ for both of that. And I've been approved for one. That's about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars right there. So this is a good thing. I'm gonna process some of the costs. And talked to Chief Kanowski today. Uh, they did a lot of renovations out of the range that we utilize, the PD's range. They're looking at, uh, starting to ask for a fee to use the range. Uh, Highway Patrol is gonna pay like fifteen hundred dollars per year. Chief Kanowski came to me and said if the sheriff's department and the county would pay a fee of eight thousand dollar coin fee. We'd have access to the range all the time and we wouldn't have to do the early charge. I told them I'd bring it up for discussion.
So they're looking for a one-time?
One-time, one-time payment.
Hold on. Like, do we get to get in for continuity, like?
Interactions renovations?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we probably want a contract on something like that.
And that would, that would suggest that.
Okay, we've got to put that in your budget for next year, but yeah. Or what?
Twenty-five, unless you can move money around.
How much, how much do you? We use it quite a bit. We typically shoot four times a year. Uh, guard camp, when, with the state employees at the guard camp, they come to us to do their qualifications. So, so I'm ma, I'm making it mandatory that we go four times a year, we do it quarterly. But we also throw other shoots in there, so we, we actually use the range quite a bit. They just put all the posts in, they got asphalt down on the lanes, that was all done this year. Uh, they're looking at putting some metal targets and stuff out there. So it's beneficial, sure, we really don't have another place to go. Yeah, so I'm just looking for some direction and.
We want to see some. See something, right? So this, just so that this doesn't come to be a huge milestone here.
Right.
I, I agree. I mean, not that it would happen to be that, but. Cause I've heard rumors that a certain chief may be retiring. And does that, should gun range go, go away with the next chief? Hey, we would expect that from public. Right. So, yeah, I, I would like the direction to be paperwork.
Okay, I'll get together with Bo, maybe we'll draw something and talk to Kanowski, Kanowski and we'll. Maybe something by the next meeting.
Don't overcomplicate it, just.
Make it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Was it the city's range or the city's range?
Anything else?
Nope, that's all, yeah, thanks.
Perfect, thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Uh, discussion on floodplain administration and FEMA letter. Well, talking with Chris, uh, we sent out that, uh, resolution for the townships. To either adopt the county's land use agreement for floodplain administration. Or forego it and utilize their own. Um, we have yet to hear back from all the townships, so. My recommendation with Chris and probably with Bo and the commission would be to tell FEMA that we'd like to end the extension of their sixty-day time limit. To better understand this and, uh, get a completion from all our townships. I don't think anybody's, um, in risk of flooding this particular time of year. So, um, I think FEMA would be okay with that and. If the commission and Bo have anything to add.
I, just from the legality standpoint of it, I think that's totally a reasonable request to make. Uh, we have been operating in good faith. We updated the forms, we sent them around. I know Chris has been really diligent trying to give meetings on the books. This is just a really hard time of year in North Dakota to get people wrangled around, so. I think that an extension, totally our request for an extension, wouldn't hurt.
And since we live in this really weird area of the world where our floods don't come and go in a matter of days. That it's not confusing and convoluted to everybody, including the new guys at FEMA that are trying to, um, ask this of the world. And I think some clarity from them, some clarity from the state would go a long way. And I think, uh, maybe asking FEMA and the state to come up here and present that. At clarity would be extremely beneficial. Uh, not only for commission, but, uh, bring in townships, bring in insurance agents that are writing, uh, these policies for homeowners. Uh, bring the community in and, and let them hear what, what FEMA is asking. I think would be a, a good point, so. We'll, uh, go ahead and extend that offer to FEMA and the state. We will extend, ask for that extension and let them know that we're working in good faith in order to meet their requirements that they're asking. As unclear as they may well be, um, but we'll continue to pursue that.
Does some of the townships only meet once a year, like in March?
Majority of them.
Well, they have their annual meeting that's required. And some of them, yes, probably meet once a year, but I would think most of them meet more regularly.
I see P that meet every month.
Yeah.
Yeah, the big, the bigger ones sure do.
Yeah. And, uh, and some of those are the whole steroid here in the building. Uh, they come in on a monthly basis, so. But I think that'd be good because I think there's townships out there that are looking for us for answers. We're looking for answers from state and federal officials and I'm not sure if we're satisfied on the answers we've gotten. To feel comfortable enough to say yes. This is it, so. But, okay. Any other discussion on that? Any questions?
Oh, where are you doing it, say that again, slide test.
Well, I think, uh, you know, last year we got a, a letter, I think, uh, end of December and asked for a fourteen-day response, which. They throw that out there and it becomes really intimidating. Uh, so it puts your spidey sense up right away. And so be careful of what, and, uh, if I had some complaints of FEMA's approach to that, that would be one of them. Was it became very, um, and I don't think it was meant intentionally, but it, it initially sent off shockwaves of that you're doing something wrong, that you're, and so it, it puts up barriers right away. And it wasn't a very open communication with them, I didn't think. And so we've been very apprehensive of being, um, keeping our guards up and, um, wondering what they're initially looking for. And, you know, I think if they were asking for a study, that's what they should have done in the first place is put that out and say, we're asking for a study. Or, I mean, we're conducting this survey with, along with the state of North Dakota to see who has land use authorization for floodplain management and, and that type of thing. And that would have been a lot friendlier correspondence. But when you had a, had a correspondence like that, it did immediately put up red flags, so. Um, I think by the first of the year or somewhere, um, within that next couple months, maybe January. Whether we can get the individuals up here. I, I would like to bring them up now and give them a tour of, of our lake and, you know, these are the problems that we're having and these are the areas that we're, um, that they're concerned about and they could point those out to us maybe. But, uh, come January, uh, the lake's gonna look a little bit better. So, but we'll, we'll work on what their schedules can look like. For some reason, they had that, had that training and that meeting in Fargo. Would have been really beneficial here. But I understand that regularly in Fargo has concerns over floodplain administration as well. Moving on. Homestead credits, three of them. I got a question on one of them. So the, one of the, and the other ones have set amounts on, like twenty percent, hundred percent. This one here says partial refund, do they just go off of? What, they qualify for? I don't know. Looking at number one? Yeah. I guess I've never seen that on it before. It's always been a percentage. So that's something they have to correct? I don't know. They just go off of what they're allocated on a paper basis?
That one, that one's only twenty.
So there is something there, it's just, move the.
All three?
All three.
Hold a second.
Motion and a second to approve the three homestead credit, uh, applications that we have in front of us. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Approval of transfer funds. Uh, we have a letter requesting transfer from. Uh, Luis Decept requesting the commission, uh, transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from general fund to Endurian document preservation, but. So.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the transfer request. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Reappointment to Ramsey County Weed Board and Ramsey County Water Board. I think we have one opening from the water board stating that they're.
Well, there's reappointment to the weed.
Oh, reappointment to the weed board.
Let's do that one first.
We'll do that one first. So Mr. Olson, is that?
Matt Olson.
Matt Olson is asking to be reappointed to the Ramsey County Weed Board, another four-year term. So, sorry, I. Motion and a second that we approved, uh, the appointment to, to Mr. Olson to the Weed Board. Further discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Uh, water board, uh, they had a member that's up in December and Mr. Christiansen has chose not to, um, resubmit his application. And so we're gonna have to go through the process of advertising for that position. Is that county responsibility to advertise for all those board positions that are come due at this time of year?
Um, actually, I put it on.
Web, county website, social media, whatever. Advertise that way?
Yep.
Okay. So.
Or if the board has, you know, someone in mind.
Individuals in mind. Mr. Christiansen has served the western portion of the county for a number of years. And I think, uh, Ramsey County Water Board would like to continue with a member in that area of the county. Although there are not particularly any districts, uh, for water boards or permissions. Um, so that could be an open position anywhere. It's a three-year term to the water boards, correct? All right. Anything else? Next meeting would be Tuesday, the.
Seventh.
Seventh of November. One thing that we did last year, and I'll have to talk with Bryce to see if we can get this going and moving, was Operation Green Light, uh, for veterans. Veterans Day is coming up, uh, soon, we'll observe it, uh, county, uh, I believe buildings closed on the tenth with the observation. The official day, the eleventh on the Saturday. Operation Green Light for veterans was a national association of counties, something that they did. Encouraging everybody to, uh, leave a green light on, on their porch, porches for bringing, uh, veterans, supporting, in their support for veterans. So something that I just noticed on an email the other day and you, you get that mentioned, um.
I think we ought to put green lights.
Out in the entryway of the courthouse and left those on overnight. And I think, uh, speaking with the DFW, last year they had a bunch of green lights that they brought up here to distribute. I'm not sure if we have any of those remaining. So we'll have to either see the availability, it'll as if anybody wants one. But, um, my grass card was one to that. Here's the Operation Green Light, the email that, from their website, N, uh, N A C O, National Association of, is it N A C O? Yeah. Sounds about right. National Association of County Commissioners, uh, has that. The public meeting that I was looking for, for a joint meeting with the counties. Um, and the county and the city and the law enforcement center to, um, put the properties together. Um, the meeting dates that I was proposing are not gonna work. It didn't sound like Howard was gonna be finished with some of the things that he was looking at doing with the abstracts. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can shed a little light on that. I informed Howard and Jack that, uh, Jeff, I called a meeting. And wanting to get this, um, resolved.
And wanting to get this, um, resolved by November first. And I believe Jack followed up with a secondary email saying, what's the status of the deeds? Are you doing some sort of title review or something along those lines? And the response was, uh, the abstract company has the abstracts, I'm waiting to get them updated before I do a title opinion. Once I have that completed, I'll let you know my findings, I'd be happy to appro- draft appropriate warranty deeds or deeds. I want to verify legal descriptions used in conveyances. And so, I again said, hey, we're looking to get this done. And he, Howard Swanson essentially said, I don't know if that will be a possibility, depending on how long it takes to get things up to date. So. There you have it.
Well, I don't know if it shined through in my email, but the frustration level of not being able to get this completed is, um, wearing on myself and wearing on others on the, on their commissions and the boards that we all serve on and represent and, um, so the sooner the resolution be, can be completed, the better. Because it, from my understanding, it goes hand in hand with the joint powers of the operation of the facility that we've been waiting on for, I think, about three years. So it's been a, a long time kicking that same can down the road. And. And, and I thought the easiest way to get that resolved was getting everybody in the room and locking the door and till we had a signed document done. But getting ten, twelve, fifteen people, twenty people to agree on a day and a time is more difficult than, I've never done it, we're cats, but I heard it would be very difficult. So, I'm just wondering how we get this resolved if we can't get all together.
I.
And I know you've done your part and, you, you know, but I'm not sure exactly where the, the delay is. Well, I kinda know where the delay is, is coming, but, um. Now, it's been frustrating, hasn't it been, William?
Well, cause we get asked every time we have a meeting, it's the. Tomorrow morning, guaranteed it's gonna be a topic.
Well, absolutely, and it should be.
The law enforcement center board has taken any?
We, we have.
Movement on anything?
We, we, we approved, um, going ahead with the accepting the, the property from the, the county and the city. And Howard was on that, at that meeting, on that call, um, with us, and, uh, so. To me, you know, talking with you, the quick claim deed, bada bing bada boom, a sign on the dotted line, property is now yours, um.
So what I see though, frustration is common is that we're not just being just like, when we sit down at the board meeting, we're kinda starting to look like fools to the other counties. It's like we can't make a decision, they're on board, but we can't get the two entities together, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
And we can't get the decision made, so that's like, well, why does this keep getting down the road? You know, and, and I don't think anybody's trying to kick it down the road, it's just, you gotta get it together, you gotta manage the process, you know?
So, a while back, I, I'm just asking a clarifying question in general. A while back, you had me draft some supplemental changes, has that been voted on by the LEC board?
Yes.
Do we know if that's been voted on by the city?
And that was on the joint powers?
Yes.
And, and that, I'm not sure if the city has taken action on that, and did that?
We got to.
Yeah. We did, was there anything within that that, um, that the properties needed to exchange before that would be done?
No.
But that's kinda what I thought too.
But I think that, I think that the LEC and whoever is responsible at the LEC, whether that's the executive director or the board, probably needs to have a conversation with their attorney about what direction you wanna head in, and, and I think that's probably a conversation that has to happen. So you can get an answer.
I'm ready for that, yeah.
Because it, it sounds like, I'm not knocking him either, because you wanna be thorough when you're doing something like this, but also.
Well, and I think Mr. Swanson brought up some of those changes, uh, supplemental changes at our last LEC meeting and we kind of explained why you made the recommendations that you've made and, and so he was gonna, I thought, take those under consideration or, um, and either reply back with his final thoughts on that or he, because I think all the counties are agreeing upon that. Uh, in fact, I think Benson County went ahead and approved the, the initial draft agreement that, that came out as soon as the debt, um, was issued, so, um. So it's just a matter of, and, and I'm not sure if going back and forth between meetings like this is the right course of action that will get that solved, because, you know, change in a period or, and here or, uh, word in that paragraph, and, you know, just, and when the LEC meets once a month and we meet twice a month, all of a sudden, we're two months down the road before, uh, changes get approved.
And I think that's why the one, the three lawyers and the other, we hush this all.
And three boards, you know, you get the LEC board and the county board and the city and get everybody.
I'm gonna have to ask a question directly, you need to ask, if somebody needs to ask you a question, you're gonna sure be able to answer it easier than Jeff or I.
And I think in theory, that's, I agree with you, I think that's a great idea. To me, it sounds like two of the lawyers are on board and wanna get this done and one in all, need, needs some direction from his board or his director as to what the board and the director wants.
We can take that right off the radar.
We'll, we'll make that perfectly clear to Mr. Swanson. I, I guess I have the, the privilege of being the chairman of that board too, so, um, we'll have that discussion tomorrow at our LEC meeting, because it has to, it has to get done. So. With that, anything else for the good of the order? If not, uh, I wanna thank everybody for sticking on. Um, I need to adjourn.